Folks, right, this is Steve Sanson and Katie Williams with Veterans in Politics. Today, our guest is Kenneth Casey Frelz, candidate for Clark County School Board Trustee, District Number G. But before we get to Mr. Frelz, Katie, tell us about yourself.
Well, I am Katie Williams. I sit on the Clark County School Board of Trustees. I represent District B, so I'm all over North Las Vegas, half of North Las Vegas, but I have Moappa, Mesquite. And this year, I actually got like the Indian Springs, kind of Mount Charleston area. So they did the redistricting, so that's pretty exciting.
You got Mount Charleston, too?
I do. So I may go buy a cabin up there, and that'll be part of my district. So we don't know. I mean, you got an extra $2.7 million laying around.
No, especially with the lodge being down.
Oh, I know. That's so sad. But yeah, but I've been in the military for 15 years. I've lived in Nevada for four. I have a six-year-old daughter. I have two German Shepherds. You know, you blow my phone up all the time. That's pretty much my life right now.
At 3:00 in the morning.
No, you don't. You don't text me at 3:00 and 5:00 in the morning. I would never answer.
Those Hillary Clinton, what she said, you gotta expect those 3:00 in the morning calls.
I would never answer. That's ridiculous, no. But yeah, that's pretty much it.
Why not? I'm a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week type.
At 3:00 AM?
Yes!
Are you serious?
Hey, we got stuff to do.
Well, that's not my fault. I don't do that. But yeah, so other than that, I've sat on the Clark County School Board for two years. I have two more years until my reelection. That's pretty much my life, in a nutshell. I'm pretty controversial on Twitter. Basically, it doesn't matter what I say, everyone attacks me for it, so it's always really fun.
All right, well, I never attacked you.
No, you haven't, no.
And I'm known as the attack dog.
We're buddies. I'll just know that we're still friends or not if you re-endorse me again in 2024. That'll be a thing.
So, Mr. Frelz, thank you for coming on the show.
A pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Katie.
Oh, thank you, Steve. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frelz.
Could you tell us about yourself?
Uh, well, I'm 45. I'm a father.
You got a 45?
Well, no, I am a 45. I am 45. No, I'm a 40-cal, personally.
Oh, you're a 40-cal person.
Yeah, but, uh, no, so, yeah.
I can't stand struggle.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm a father. I'm a computer systems engineer. I've been doing that since 1997. I manage large IT projects or...
That's all we've been having on the show today. Everybody's in the IT.
That's, you know...
All three of you.
I'm in marketing, I'm in accounting.
But all the guests has been on IT.
Being here in Nevada in particular, and in Las Vegas, the best thing about working on computers is that they have to be kept in air conditioning.
Oh, so you're...
I see where it's... He was like, "I'm not gonna be a general hand laborer person." There's no hate to the blue collar community. I just don't like...
No, no, I started out as a plumber. That my first job, I tried to join the Army in 1994. They tested my herring and sent me home.
Sure.
I'd had to eat six pounds of bananas that morning so that I weighed enough.
Oh, no. I've been there. I was there for six years. I...
You've done that to somebody there?
You guys were the worst type of candidates. I could never get you to gain weight.
I had a 98 Asvab, and yeah, and to this day, I still can't gain weight.
The Air Force would have taken you.
Well, yeah, and the Navy wanted me to run reactors, but they were like, "Get in a titanium tube with 60 dudes and two nuclear reactors, and don't let the reactors kill anybody." And I was like, "A hard pass guy. I don't think this is gonna work out."
I love it. I love it. So it's cool.
But yeah, so, uh, yeah, like I said, I grew up kind of all over the South. My dad was Army Airborne Ranger Special Forces, retired as an E-7 after 22 years.
You're military bred.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Grew up on Air Force bases largely, you know, with Special Forces guys. They keep them where they can put them on planes and...
So how did you get into IT when you have all those Special Forces people around?
You know, okay, so, uh, the funny thing is, it's actually related. My dad came home when I was about eight or nine years old, and he had won an Atari 400 in a poker game. And I don't know if you've ever seen the Atari 400. It's a, not like just the video game machine you put cartridges in, but this thing had a keyboard and a basic interpreter cartridge. And it was an actual, for the time, it was as real a computer as you could get. And it, you know, inspired my love of computers early on. But like I said, my dad won that thing in a poker game.
He should have brought you a AR. That probably would have inspired you.
This would have been, what, 1982, 1983? So I don't know, there wasn't a lot of options. You know, the Atari 400 was...
Was what?
Was the peak of the market. And like I said, he won in a poker game against his Special Forces buddies. So that's how, by randomly bringing that thing home, it kind of got me interested in computers. And, uh, you know, like I said, as I grew up and got involved with more advanced computers, I just, uh, the games I wanted to play were all on PCs. And the PCs of the era were terrible, crashy, unstable things. And so I learned how to keep them stable because I wanted my game to run right. And that's basically...
That's pretty cool.
Video games, yeah. You know, my mom said video games would never get me anywhere. I sure showed her.
Yeah, I know, right?
I used to say that.
How do you look at me now, Mom?
Yeah, yeah.
My entire career is based off technology. Thanks, Mom.
Yeah, but, uh...
It's pretty funny. You know what, though? Here's the thing. I feel like you saying that, now a bunch of kids are gonna watch this, and they're gonna be like, "See, this is what I've been telling you. GTA, right? Grand Theft Auto is gonna teach me how to be..."
Grand Theft Auto.
Tech giant.
Yeah, don't skip the two years as a plumber, digging trenches and underhouses and covered in plumbing stuff, you know, to make me really appreciate not being in ditches and loving air conditioning.
Oh, gosh.
So, yeah, but I mean, really, it was that, uh, those early experiences with, you know, real work, you know, getting out and like I said, being a plumber, doing rough-in plumbing, doing repair plumbing, doing, you know, cleaning up drains, putting in a sewer line. But like I said, the day I decided to go to college, I was at the bottom of a trench because the yard was too steep to get a backhoe in to dig up the sewer line. So we were just, you know, manual backhoeing, you know, getting, clearing this thing out. And I'm standing at the bottom of a hole, and it's like 34 degrees, and it's snowing. But as soon as the snow hits you, it turns to very, very cold water. And my coveralls are soaked, and I'm muddy, and I'm miserable, and I'm digging a hole. And I'm hearing all these people in my head going, "You should go back to school. And you're so good with computers. Why don't you do something with computers?" And, you know, a couple of weeks later, I was enrolled at, you know, Nashville State College.
Yeah. That makes sense. I get that.
So why are you running for school board, and what are the boundaries for District G?
So District G is kind of roughly the east side of town. There are some exclusions and inclusions, but you could roughly put the bottom of it at like the 215 and Lake Mead on the south side, and about like Desert Inn up to a point, and then like Charleston up to a point, and kind of out all the way to the mountain that way. And there's some chunks down and some chunks up around Green Valley and whatnot. But basically, the east side of town. But what really motivated me to run was watching online schooling for my seven-year-old. He was six last year. He was starting kindergarten. And a group of people at the board who have doctorates and master's degrees decided that shipping a Chromebook to the home and instructing these kids remotely was what was gonna work for kindergartners. And, uh, exactly my reaction.
I don't have kindergartners. I have a kindergarten.
You know, computer use has literacy as a prerequisite. You know, you gotta be able to read to use the computer to understand what the keyboard is for. And, you know, kindergartners aren't literate, and they threw computers in front of them. And I'm not gonna fault the teachers, because I sat and watched these teachers take, you know, basically, bear skins and stone knives and try to make a radio out of it. And they, uh, they worked hard. The phys ed teacher at my kid's school, Mr. Cove, watching him get 16 kids on a Google Meet all doing exercise in their kitchens and watching them getting them all into sync and all, I was just like, "Is that...?" It was literally one of the...
Teacher does is a bonus. Mr. Cove, I'm watching for you.
It was one of the most amazing organizational things I've ever seen in my whole life. I've been a project manager for nearly 20 years, and I've never seen anybody bring a group together the way Mr. Cove was able to get those kids working out on a Google Meet. And I mean, and it's just, but it was ridiculous that that's what they had to do.
Sure.
And the idea that the people at the administration at the school board said, "This is a great plan, and this is gonna work, and this is what we're putting our money on," is just, I mean...
So full disclosure, everyone out there, I was not on the school board when this happened. Don't blame me. I got elected in 2020. This was long after the shutdown.
Yeah, so, uh, really, you know, like I said, it was just, uh, it was hard to watch. And then to just watch the school board meetings online and go in person and see what's going on and just see the, you know, the fact that they're more focused on scoring political points and arguing with one another than they are trying to find a common goal of, "Hey, let's get these kids educated."
That'd dig at me.
No, 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 not like I said. You know, like I said, I think that you're one of the few people that's trying to work with everybody.
She's closer to you than those other school boards.
Yeah, no, it's really, I think that, uh... Yeah, there's a lot of, like I said, it just, it seems like when the goal is educating our children that we could put aside our personal differences and come to some sort of common understanding and get to kids being able to read and kids being able to do math.
So have you ever read the book by Dr. Robert Greene? It's called The 48 Laws of Power.
I have not read it, but I'm familiar with it.
You absolutely should read it. I suggest everybody read it. And basically, what I would like to title this book is it's called The 48 Laws of Manipulation. Right? Because that's what this book is about. It just talks about human behavior and how to deal with human behavior, and how to either persuade people or to get people to think a certain way and things like that. So you talk about the school board, and the school board, actually, this is a crash course of the 48 laws of power by watching us interact with each other. And I've said it many, many times, where if you watch my first year in office, towards the first six months, I was actually really quiet. I was really reserved. I was watching a lot of things that were going on. And, you know, since early 2021, I think I was sworn in on January 4th. And so we were, I just, you watch the way that people interact with each other first, and then you kind of try to work your way through there.
Know your audience, right?
And you gotta know your audience. You gotta know how to talk to them, right? So as we were going through it, and as I was watching how these people interact with each other, you realize very, very quickly that the people you think are the enemies are really, truly not the enemies. And the people who you don't think are the enemies absolutely are the enemies. And I know that's probably a pretty brash term, but it's just, it's just the way it is. And so you watch me as I go through my very first year. I made some votes. They were probably a little bit more moderate in nature. And just to watch how people would react truly, and then as you see towards the end of the year, which is why we saw like the, in June, June was a huge blow-up, and September, October, November, December, right, towards those times, because you start to see, if you mirror a lot of people's behavior, they actually stop. And so that's one of those things that we try to do, because it is hard, because we have, we spend countless of dollars on wasted efforts of having consultants come in and mentor this board. And when the mentors will flat-out tell you like, "Hey, we've worked with over 400 school districts, and your school district is the only one that is completely dysfunctional, and the only thing that will help you is your election cycle." And that's what's so disheartening about it, right? So then we're like, "Okay, then why? Why?" And you'll see in my votes, it's why I vote against a lot of things, that I'm like, "This is a waste of money. I don't know why we're doing this, because we're gonna sit here through this eight-hour work session. We're gonna listen to these women talk. We're gonna listen to this other consultant talk. We're gonna listen. We're gonna say, 'Yes, I agree. This is a great idea. We're gonna absolutely do this.'" And then the next board meeting, we're all gonna throw it out the window.
Right back to where it went.
And I was like, "I don't agree with wasting taxpayer dollars on consultants just to hear a couple of the trustees agree, nod their heads, smile, you know, give a little bit of their heart, and then go right back to the board and just completely destroy it." So all that to say, I suggest that you read that book.
No, no, I definitely, I most certainly will.
If you get elected and you sit on this board, I guarantee you'll...
Putting it on my audible list right now.
And you know, speaking of that, this is an all-female board.
Yes.
What would you do if you're the only male there? How would you maneuver through all that estrogen?
Okay, well...
That's such a nice way of just saying we're a bunch of catty women.
So I have worked throughout my life in a number of female-run and dominated organizations. And, you know, I think they really, like I said, I think that they could certainly use an injection of kind of some dad energy, some decisiveness.
Some dad energy?
No, I think it is so important that he said that, because there's a lot of male candidates running in this cycle, District F, District D, and District D. There's a ton of them. And I said that, too. I said, because some of them asked me, I said, "Listen, if you go in here into your election cycle saying, 'Hey, it's all a bunch of catty women. We need some men on that board,' you're not gonna get elected. You're not gonna get any close, like anywhere close. But dads, 100%, are underrepresented on that board." I speak to more dads than I do mothers as a trustee, and all the time...
There's just as many of them.
Yeah, just as many. Absolutely. Well, I think we kind of get in this mindset where it's like, it's education, right? So it's kind of like a mom's role, right? That's a societal kind of thing.
You know, I've fought that. That's one of the, one of the things I have liked best about moving to Nevada from Tennessee is getting further away from that idea that the kids are the mom's responsibility and the dad should be off, you know, taking care of the home. Now, I'm not arguing that the dad should be caring for and taking care of the home, but I'm saying that the father needs to be taking some interest into the children. We look at, I mean, the horrificness down in Texas. I mean, you look at this, you look at the, you know, the kid in Buffalo, and then, you know, you gotta go back a couple of years to get to the few ones before that, but the consistent marker in every single one of these is no father in the household. Every single time. Every single time. There's no dad. And that's a problem.
Important judges.
And that's a real problem. No, I mean, again, like I said, I've got my own son and my own custody issues. I've been through all of this, you know? I've dealt with the courts both in Tennessee and here in Nevada. And I gotta tell you, I've gotten a fair shake here in Nevada as a man.
Yeah, I will say Nevada's a little bit fair. I come from Illinois, and 100% Nevada's much better.
No, I mean, it's not perfect. It's not, it's not completely fair. It's not, it's, you know, the mother still gets some favoritism, but I've gotta say, it's nowhere, you know, my son's mother had to screw up four times before I even got 50% custody in Tennessee.
You know, we live in a society that we, especially in the low-economic society, they talk about the problem with the kids going into gangs to find a family.
Because they're looking for guidance. They're looking for a man.
It's because the fathers take off and leave the child fatherless. But then in the family court system, they're doing exactly the same thing they're ranting about. It just doesn't make sense.
Well, there's a lot, there's actually a lot of studies done on child development where they actually say the child will mirror and match the parent that they share a gender with the most, right? And it doesn't mean that they don't, you know, can't live in different households or things like that. So I'll give you a good example. My daughter and my ex-husband, we co-parent. We see each other literally every day. We don't live together. We live in two separate households. He's five minutes down the road. My daughter sees both of us every day. You know what, though? I like him. He's so a good guy. You know, but we...
That's fantastic. You guys are able to work together.
But we see each other every day, because when we got divorced, the one thing that we discussed, I said, "Listen, my love for my daughter is more important than my desire to get away from you." Right? And not that he was a bad guy or anything.
That's a good thinking process.
Right? But that's me, right? Not everybody thinks like me. And this is, but this is a generational problem, right? And I've never advocated for divorce. I don't actually think that that's something we should ever shoot for. I think that we should just marry well, right? I think if we could, if we could go back, and that doesn't mean my ex-husband's a bad guy, right? We're just two different people. We weren't really compatible, and we just kind of stuck together for a long time. But if we can marry well in the beginning, then that will actually, you know, get away from a lot of these breakups and divorces. And divorce is really easy, I won't lie to you. It's just, it's easy to get divorced nowadays, depending on your relationship with that person. And I would say this, too, is that if we don't start bringing God back into the home, and we don't start bringing God back into our society and our culture, because this is a problem that was generationally broken, and it's gonna take generations to fix. This is not an Amazon Prime, turn it around in two days thing.
No, you're completely right, in that the breakdown of the family, the breakdown of the church, and the people losing that as an influence of their life is really why they make such poor choices in partners early on, because that's really, you had your mother and your grandmother to guide you. You had, you know, the pastor at the church, the priest at the church. You know, you had somebody to provide that guidance to help you say, "Hey, you know, you guys have a lot of fun together, but maybe you should find somebody that you've got long-term fundamental compatibility with."
Yeah. Well, I think those are our young brains, right?
You know, I say this with the hindsight of 45 years, and being on my third marriage, I was, you know, I've got a, I was divorced once. Fortunately, we didn't have any kids.
So third time's the charm, right?
My second wife, I lost to cancer, and my third wife, I've been fortunate enough to find the best match I've ever found in my whole life.
Yeah.
Heather, if you're watching, I love you. But, uh, yeah, you know, like I said, yeah.
With all this heart.
Third time's definitely been the charm.
You know, my mom was married four times, and I always tell her, "It's not really her fault." Her second one actually also passed away, so my second, or my, I guess my first stepdad actually passed away, so it actually became this joke in our family. She's like, "I technically have only been married three times." I'm like, "No, Mom. Like, I don't think that's how the math works." And she's like, "Okay, well, you know."
But, uh, yeah, like I said, so I say this with the hindsight of years of experience and having screwed it up myself, but I mean, uh, yeah, like I said, I think that that's, you know, we gotta get back to church. There's no question.
Yeah.
Mr. Frelz, I'm looking at your pamphlet, and one of the things that you're highlighting is crisis of education.
Yes, sir.
Reading proficiency and math proficiency. How you plan to get that up?
Well, uh, like, I come from the IT world, and so when I look at a bad outcome... Well, yeah, yeah, we just fixed this right up. We have no problem, no time. No, you've got to change your inputs if you wanna get different outputs. And right now, the output we're getting is a third of the kids can do math at grade level, and half the kids can do, or can read at grade level, and that's unacceptable. I mean, that's, if you wanna talk about failures of the administration and the school system in general, I mean, I don't know how to look at that and go, "Yeah, that's, wow, that's a winning record." You know, I mean, 333 is good in baseball, but not anywhere else, you know? What we have to do is we have to attract and retain the best teachers.
How are you gonna do that when, when it was reported on the news that a lot of these teachers that have the criteria to teach, have teaching criterias, they weren't called back?
No, no.
But yet they complained that they have a shortage of teachers within the administration, so it doesn't make sense.
I know at least three credentialed teachers personally, friends of mine, that have applied and have been for mysterious reasons, just never hired, you know, when they're perfectly qualified people.
Do they tell them? Does that chart tell them what?
They don't, nobody, they don't tell you anything.
Shouldn't that be a criteria, so you'll know how to improve?
This is something that I would like to see changed.
Or challenged, even? If they say, "Well, you know, this is missing. That's missing." Then you'll know, "Hey, you know, I got that. Here you go." But if you don't tell them, how they gonna know?
Well, like I said, transparency in any government organization is paramount. And I mean, we're really lucky, at least on the financial side, with Open Book. We've got excellent financial records, and it's one of the ways I've been able to look through and kind of understand so much of what's going on. But, yeah, we need that, I don't understand why at any place in the school system outside of where it would violate a child or, you know, some of their medical issues or something like that, why there should ever be secrecy? Like, there should be sunshine laws throughout this thing. Anything happening inside the school system is public. It's publicly funded.
Sunshine law? The sunshine law?
Yeah. Like in Florida, they have sunshine laws. Where basically, all government proceedings are public. You can't hide anything that the government does.
It's supposed to be.
That's why, that's why you get all the Florida man stories, is because like really outrageous things always make it to the press, because every single thing is published in Florida.
Well, and Florida has the largest school district and has a less amount of funding, right? Is that my understanding?
Oh, and Miami-Dade, and they're getting far, far better results.
And they're far better than we are.
No, and I mean, from a demographic standpoint, they face a lot of the same issues that we do with bilingual, a lot of, you know, English as second language students. And they're managing to get some of the best results in the country while we're, you know, languishing out here in the desert, you know, with leaving our...
California, that's what's going on.
Well, I, you know, I would love to blame the Californians.
I would, and I will. They're all their fault. No, I actually have a lot of friends from California. I'm sorry. No, I, what I will say this, when I was running for school board, a lot of things, I was very, I would, I guess, say ignorant of truly what goes on inside this school district. Being on it for two years now, you kind of see, or a year and a half, you see what's going on inside the school district and where the issues lie. I'll tell you, it's not really truly at the school board level. It's always and always will be at the state level. And so when we talk about midterm elections and the state assembly and the state senate seats, this is where we really need to make those differences, too. And I'm not saying that school board's not important, because obviously, I absolutely advocate for having very sound and reasonable people on the school board.
But the NRS has set the policies.
But the NRS has set the policy, and the Nevada Department of Education sets curriculum, which is why some of these curriculums, so you look at some of these policies where it's like 47% is our reading proficiency, which is actually awful, right? It's terrible. 40% of our students, and not just our students, this is a nationwide statistic, but 40% of our students going into two-year universities are taking remedial math courses and reading courses. 70% of those going into four-year will take remedial math and reading courses. So this is not just an issue with Clark County or with Miami-Dade County. This is a nationwide issue, and if parents don't start getting involved in education now, then it's gonna be really big deals. I'm gonna give you another book if you want it.
Have they backed down the standards so much that, you know, I mean, that we're sending the kids to college unprepared? I mean...
Yes. We absolutely do.
Getting kids prepared for workforce in colleges, that's the whole goal of the school system.
And here's some of the things that I think, too, right? And so this, but this goes into a deeper conversation about college, right? Is college truly the best route for everybody, right?
No, it isn't.
Right? Because it's not, right? But what did we do, not, you know, before I was born, right? So you guys can tell me. Just kidding. So... Why? I'm not saying anything. You're just super vibrant.
I'm 22. She's over the 30.
I'm 32. So, um, no, but this goes into a deeper conversation about, you know, in the 70s and 80s, you know, what did we do? We pushed kids to go to school. And we, you know, because back then, right, having a college degree set you apart from everybody else. Well, now, having a college degree does what?
Just puts you even with everybody else at start, yeah.
Even with everyone else. And now you have to go get a master's, then you have to go get a PhD, or you have to go do all of these extra post-secondary grad school things.
I had tons of extra training addition to my degree.
Yeah, but to set you apart, right? And so like you, you talk about project management. I'm in project management and in marketing, and I went and got a PMP, right? And that alone set me apart from hundreds of candidates that are probably way more skilled than I am, but because I have that certificate, I got jobs. Right? And so it just talks about those things. So a book that I think that you should read, and I actually think everyone in education should read this, but it's written by Senator Ben Sasse, and it's called The Vanishing American Adult, and he talks about the history of the Department of Education. And the worst thing government ever did was get involved in education. It's the worst thing it ever did. Now, I'm not saying that there doesn't need to be regulations or certain requirements to get a student to where they need to be, but one of the, one of the worst policies ever was no child left behind, right? Where we dumbed down our entire education system, and we left everybody behind, right? And so...
There should be no, no child left behind. Just kidding.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, just getting shot. So I'll say this, so as I, as I, I was a personal trainer for years, and what I did is I always geared my workouts to my fittest athlete that I was training. And then everybody else, I would adjust from that point. But I wanted to make sure that that person was always challenged, and then I could challenge everybody else based off of that workout. So I, and I know it's like a really easy simplification, but just in general, when we talk about curriculum and our reading proficiencies, because New York is just as bad, right?
Oh, and they spend $3,000 a child.
California is awful. Oregon, Seattle, like all of these, all of these big school districts are just terrible. And really, truly, what it is, is that we are pumping money into a problem thinking it's going to get fixed. And it's not gonna get fixed, because it doesn't get fixed by money. It gets fixed by policy.
It's like saying, you know, paying for the gym is gonna help you lose weight.
Well, I mean, you're probably there, right?
Actually go work out.
Right? Or you work out for like an hour on the treadmill, and then you go eat like three Big Macs.
Yeah, yeah. You gotta reward yourself. I mean, you had to dump for an hour.
Well, that's not a reward, okay? That's not a reward if you do it every time. Kind of counterproductive. So, or like Planet Fitness giving pizza away, pizza and donuts. You didn't know that? Oh, you don't know that? Planet Fitness gives away pizza and donuts.
Well, I mean, they wanna keep you coming in.
That doesn't make any... $10 gym membership, come on in, and then you can have pizza and donuts.
Mr. Frelz, um, school safety.
Yes.
You got teachers being raped in this classroom.
That's why they had to bring back expulsion. We got rid of expulsion until they couldn't let that kid back.
You got kids carrying guns in school. What's your remedy to fix that, to address that, those issues?
Well, like I said, we've got real serious crisis of security. And like I said, I think a lot of our other problems in the school system kind of are downwind from this one, because, you know, I mean, you've got kids too scared to learn, and you've got teachers too afraid to show up, you know? We wonder why we're bleeding out teachers. It's like, well, you know, I might get attacked at this job, or I could go take a job at another system where I'm kept safe, you know?
How you gonna keep our staff and our teachers safe? How you gonna keep her, how you gonna keep her, our, our staff and our teachers safe?
First off, our, uh, the current security measures in place are.
Along with the kids that have nothing to do with it, by the way.
Like I said, the, uh, the current security measures we've got in place are inadequate. I mean, we've got, uh, the CCSD police force, you know, which can't possibly provide security for all of the schools, is supposed to be staffed out at a hundred and eighty people. We're a little under a hundred and fifty, like one forty-eight or so right now, I think, thereabouts. Uh, they, uh, you know, so we're already understaffed. And then you take that number of understaffed officers, and you're spreading them across three hundred and fifty-six schools, some of which are in Indian Springs and Laughlin and, you know, uh, you know, way out in the, uh, in, in the edges of the county. And they, like I said, okay, so that's, that, that's our rapid response force that's supposed to show up when things go bad. Okay, well, cool, we got that. I think what we really need is a, um, like a semi-professional security force in the school, like at least one or two people that are just like professional security guards, that are there to help load and unload the buses, help at lunchtime, you know, provide all sorts, you know, I'm sure they can find stuff for them to do around the school. But their primary job is that they are big and strong enough to restrain whatever child wants to get out of line. And you've got th- that front line of defense, you bolster up the number of officers. I mean, I think that, you know, I don't know how we, I'd like to see it in the budget that we could double it, you know? I mean, to have at least one officer for each school, that'd be great. But I mean, honestly, I think that in the high schools, you need two officers. And I think in the middle schools, you need at least one. I mean, I, you know, you might be able to spread one officer across two or three elementary schools. I think we could probably get away with that.
Not in the corner, what's going on in Texas?
You're not wrong, but fifth graders tend to be small enough. But yeah, I mean, again, uh, and that's where, you know, a professional security force that can call for help when it's needed, and somebody that can respond, provide, you know, I mean, like I said, you get, in high schools, you get eleventh, twelfth graders that are, you know, three hundred pounds, and we've got, you know, five foot two, five foot three teachers. Hey, look, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not quite six feet, I understand. I'm not the biggest guy in the world, but you know, uh, sometimes you need to have just a big guy to grab hold and get these people, you know, and break them up. You know, I mean, and perhaps having that, you know, a, a force there is great. And again, we got a lot of veterans that are looking for work right now, and this is a, you know, we could provide them with the training to deal with the youth, and this is something that they could do, you know? Uh, and I, I, I think that that's a, you know, something I think we.
You gonna pay them?
Well, I mean, I can't personally pay them, but I'd like to, I, this is not something. I'm not, I'm not asking for a volunteer force. No, that's, I mean, you know, I mean, I saw a picture yesterday, a guy standing outside their schools in Texas where, you know, they're providing some security. And I get that, if it's my kid in there, I'd be doing the same thing. But, uh, you know, uh, like I said, we, this, this doesn't need to be, this needs to be a paid force and professionals. I mean, they're, you, you're talking about people that are going to have to occasionally physically handle a child that's out of hand. You don't want just some guy off the street doing this job. They need to be a professional that's well-trained and that's ready to deal with kids, and understand that they're dealing with kids.
Yes, yes.
And not, and not come in just like cracking skulls right off the bat.
I'm glad you, I'm actually glad you said that, because I think it's really important that people understand that, um, while CCSD is understaffed, right? Because a lot of, a lot of them retire, right? They go, there's about ten people in their administrative staff that are not like patrolling schools, um, you know, or they're working dispatch offices or things like that. But we do call Metro when big incidents happen, right? And so CCSD during that El Dorado attack, CCSD was first on scene. Um, and then they called Metro, and Metro kind of got involved a little bit, things like that. And I can't really disclose that investigation by itself. But just in general, CCSD officers deal with more kids than Metro does. And these officers, not only are they dealing with some kids who are very dangerous, but they're also dealing with kids who are very mentally, um, going through challenges. That, that we just don't understand, right? And so it's why we, we actually have, um, social workers on the police force that do this. And then all of our officers actually go through crisis intervention training. If not annually, then it's biannually. But, um, you know, I think it's really interesting that you say that, because one of the things that I said, uh, when I became a CCSD trustee is that why is our budget for officers so small? It's about forty million, it's not much, right?
No, I mean, covering a county the size of Clark County.
It's not much, right? And so, and what you don't realize is that early intervention with officers and kids will actually, uh, detach, or, uh, I guess dissuade students from actually committing crimes because they think they're gonna get away with it. I don't know if you guys remember the DARE program? But the DARE program, I, even though everyone thinks it's a colossal failure, single-handedly kept me off drugs, right? I swear it did, I swear it did. And I think it's because I had such a good relationship with the officer that would come to my school. And every time, I'd see him every single day, and he just had the coolest little dog, and, um, you know, we have, we have an officer named Officer Cook, uh, and he has a dog named Officer Oreo. He has an Instagram page, right? The dog does, not Officer Cook. Nobody cares about the actual guy, right? But everyone loves this dog. And so he travels to these elementary schools, he dresses as Santa during, um, you know, Shop With The Cop, Toys For Tots.
These kind, this kind of engagement is critical.
And that's exactly, right? Because officers are always constantly, um, you know, I guess berated as these bad guys. And I hate to say it, but even in this Uvalde, Texas shooting, our officers are getting railed right now. Um, you know, and everyone is so mad about this investigation. And while I understand, and this is probably gonna make me lose a ton of followers, right? Just this one statement that I'm gonna make. While I understand the, the anger and the pain and the hurt that people are feeling, trust and believe that the officers in those situations, if you've never been shot at, if you've never had a gun pointed to your head, if you've never felt the cold steel of a barrel on your forehead, then you do not understand what they were going through. So please give them some grace. While it is awful that over twenty families are grieving and losing people, like, I, I get it, I do one hundred percent get it, and my heart goes out to them. But please have a little bit of grace for some of these officers, because some of them were rookies, some of them had no clue. And not only that, but then you're dealing with inner agencies. I can't tell you how many times I have read a CCSD police report where Metro gets involved, and because a Metro officer screws something up, right, then CCSD has to come back and fix it, and then there's like a six-hour wait time, and then there's like a twelve, twelve-week turnaround time for, to get a conclusion for this one investigation because something got screwed up, right? And the problem with this is that we have too many policies that tie the hands of our current officers. And like you talked about, you know, we can't have officers just coming in and cracking skulls, right? Chief Black Eye, who is the chief of CCSD police, he even said, we, we use, we use non-lethal use of enforcement. You know, do they have guns? Yes, they have guns. They have not used them on any student, right? They do use their pepper spray, they do have tasers, and they do have batons. Now, they, he has openly admitted, he's like, we tell our officers, do not use the batons. I don't even know why they carry them on their belt, like, do not use the batons, because how would that look? Right? You have a tenth grader or, um, even a sixth grader, because some of these sixth graders are taller than me, you know? Um, and then an officer comes over here with like cracking a skull with a.
As, as a punk teenager, I was taken right off my feet by a sheriff's officer with an auto baton. I know just how effective they are.
Um, that, but it goes to your point, right? Which is why we have to increase their budget, allow them to hire more people, allow them to have, um, two officers in each high school. I one hundred percent agree with that statement. Two officers in one hun- in every single high school, one officer in every single middle school, one officer in every single elementary. Because early intervention does prevent crime, and it does make all the difference, and that's why we have dads in school now, which is great.
Knowing police officers and having a friendly relationship with the police, they're gonna be a lot less likely to get into trouble lately. They're gonna respect the police, they're gonna respect the law.
Maps the way that they're districted, but they're not, the police officers aren't districted up, districted up like the trustees are. So they're, are in gridlines, and then they have like roving officers that, you know, will go around. And that's why we, we rely a lot on Metro to kind of help us out with that. But at the same time.
Gaps to cover.
We have big gaps to cover, but at the same time, we don't wanna call Metro when we're having a student having a mental breakdown.
Yeah, because that's, that's, you know, everybody knows how badly that can go.
Well, it can, because you don't truly understand what some of these kids go through. We have so many wards of the state, we have so many kids who are homeless during, during, uh, the pandemic. We had three thousand students that went missing and they couldn't find them, right? Now, did we find them eventually? I don't know, I think so, I'm pretty sure. But a lot of them just left school because they were homeless. I mean, where else do you go?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I visit.
They couldn't do school from home because there was no home.
I have visited the tunnels, like, down there by the Rio, there are kids that are down there. You know, there are young adults that are down there, eighteen, seventeen years old, and they're just, they, you know, where are these kids supposed to go? Do they go to school at all? And they don't, right? And that's the answer. And, and the problem is that CCSD, while most people don't understand this, we are the largest employer in the state.
Yes.
Not the county, the state. We are the largest employee in all of Nevada. And it's very difficult to solve the state's problems, when the state won't even come in to solve their own problems.
I completely agree with you there.
So do you believe in campus carry?
Uh, well, this is a, you know, okay, I believe in the Constitution, which says that I should be able to put on my pistol and go anywhere with it so long as I'm being law-abiding. And, uh, I don't see how schools necessarily are different. Now, do I think we should be handing every teacher, you know, give them a, you know, old, you know, surplus nineteen elevens or something like that? It's probably not a great idea. Unless, this is why I think we need a train force in schools. So, yeah. We need a trained force in the schools, you know? We don't want to have to have the teachers being the implementers of violence if it comes down to it. We wanna have professionals that do that.
What happened if there were, um, an, uh, uh, an additional course for teachers to go through? An intense course for teachers to go through?
Proper training? I'm all, as long as they've had the proper training, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Walk with a weapon inside of a school, and if something does happen, they, they're, they're more advanced.
At least somebody's there ready to help. Yeah, no, I mean, like I said, I mean, uh, a gun doesn't solve all situations, but there's a lot that it will solve, especially if you get a situation like we had down in Texas.
Yeah, and it solved that situation.
You know, I mean, yeah, I mean, when somebody finally was able to deploy it, you know, um, yeah, like I said, there's, uh, yes, I think with the proper training, that i- if a teacher is willing to seek that training, I think that, I mean, I'd be happy with the school board paying for it.
The way, the way I envision it, because to, to have a CCW have to go through the training in the background. And I think that if a teacher wants to carry a weapon on school property, they should have more advanced training. Maybe something close to a military police training? Or, or post-certified training? Well, that, that marshals have and all cops go through to carry a weapon.
Yeah, no, I completely agree. Uh, yeah, I think that, um, you definitely need to make sure that the, if, if somebody's going to be dedicated in this role and certified to be able to carry on, on campus, and, you know, to work to protect the school, that, yeah, that they've had the right, you know, training with the firearm, the right psychological training, you know? Because as terrible as it is to say, if you are a teacher and you've got to use your gun, it's likely gonna be against a student, or at least somebody who's fairly young. You don't, that's not, I, I, I lost a friend was a ranger, who, I lost him to suicide. And it was because of his experiences in Somalia, where to save his own life, he had to kill a teenage boy. And he never could get over this. He was never able to get past it, and it killed him. And, you know, like I said, you've gotta, you've gotta make sure these people have got the right psychological training. If you're gonna designate them as the, you know, the person that's gonna come out firing, then they need to be ready for it.
So if, if a teacher, um, went through the training, and let's say they changed how, how weapons are carried on school campus, and the teacher went through a post-certified training, um, gun safety, um, they, they qualify, I don't know, maybe twice a year.
Oh, yeah.
Range.
Give them tethered pistols with, you know, like a short patrol or something.
And, and have all that gun discipline. And, uh, a student was to come on, on campus with a weapon, and, uh, the teacher was to fire that weapon to hit the student, but maybe hit somebody else. Is there, is there gonna be a huge liability involved with the school?
Well, I mean, uh, you know, uh, well, like I said, you're basically, if you're arming them and putting them in there to keep the peace, you're basically designating them as peace officers. And I mean, and they oughta, they oughta get the same sovereign immunity that a peace officer has.
Should they carry their own insurance?
But I mean, but anybody that carries a pistol should carry their own insurance, end of story. If you, if you are a, a responsible firearms owner and you're gonna carry in public, then you should have firearms insurance. That's just, that's just prudent and good policy.
How about metal detectors?
Uh, again, you're gonna slow the whole process coming down, in and out, dubious use, uh, how easy is it for me to get something? I mean, I've accidentally carried my knife into the airport. I mean, I know I can do that, so I mean, you know, I mean.
Here, let me, let me.
Nice, three airports.
Well, accidentally took my Swiss Army knife into the airport once. And they never, I went right through, it was on my carry-on, and they went right through with it, yeah. Like I said, so I mean.
Well, how much of blade, though? I mean, because I mean, yeah, probably not very.
Let's see your blade.
My Swiss Army knife.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right, take it off.
I wouldn't have worried about that either.
It's not, you worry about ox cutter.
I wouldn't have worried about that either.
Nine eleven hijackers.
But I'll tell you, I'll tell you a really good experience I had, actually. So I've, I've one hundred percent always said that people in prison are actually safer than our kids in our schools.
You're not wrong.
And I said that, and people get so angry with me.
Again, you're with.
No, I mean, everyone, well, here's the thing. Can you walk, can you walk into any prison? Can you walk into a high desert prison and just start shooting up a bunch of prisoners?
Hell no, there's gates and walls and.
And COs with guns, right? Uh, but here's the thing, and people are like, well, you want our kids to be in prison? I said, no, I want our kids to be safe. I don't care what you have to do to do that. So I was a recruiter for the Illinois Army National Guard for four years, um, before I had moved out to Nevada. And there was a school that I used to recruit out of. In the four years that I was there, not one time did they find a weapon on us. Well, they did find weapons on students, but they took them at the door. They had rollaway metal detectors, they had single-point entries, they had bulletproof glass. And every time I walked into that school, I was checked in, I was escorted to the classroom to where I was going to teach, and then I was escorted back. That was not to keep me safe. That was to keep the students safe. They didn't care that I was in uniform, they didn't care, they knew who I was.
You were a stranger on campus.
Yeah, I was a stranger on campus, and I could not go and, like, access these students without having people next to me. So while a lot of people are like, we don't want metal detectors, because you can, yes, are there faulty procedures with metal detectors? Sure. Can that happen? Absolutely. However, when it comes to the, the sure statistics of it, how more, how much more likely is it to happen? That it fails? And that it, if they're proper maintained, properly maintained, right? That time that you did that at TSA, how often do you think that you'd get away with that?
Oh, well, like I said, probably not all the time.
Probably never again, honestly, right? And it's probably could have just been a faulty thing, or, or just, and, and just in general, right? So while people disagree with the metal detectors, they disagree with the bulletproof glass, they disagree with having campus monitors with weapons, um, I don't care what those people think.
And then they complain when their kids get shot.
Then I have, I have a six-year-old who's now going to be a first grader. If I ever get to a point where I can't go pick her up, because there's, the school's on a lockdown, because they're single-point entries, and so I'll tell you this too. Back in, this is twenty, thirty years ago, when they started building some of these schools, um, they built them so that they couldn't be locked from, um, from the outside, or from the inside, or something, however it is. But, so that's why it's very easy, that's why we have at, many, many access points on our schools. And where you talk about it slows down the process, it doesn't slow down the process that much, I promise you. Single-point entry, it's the safest way to get our schools in. And a lot of people are like, oh, Katie, you're in the military, you should know better, that a single-point entry, like, it's just really easy for kids to get shot at, at the door. I'm like, really? We just wanna plug all the holes in here and just like.
Well, I mean, I don't know that that, has that happened? I don't know that that's ever happened.
No, it doesn't happen, and that's the thing.
I mean, in Israel, a few times.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't absolutely happen. So just in general, like, these people that will dissuade from, um, you know, bulletproof glass and campus monitors and things like that, they have never been in a war zone, they have never been shot at. And I promise you, these kids that have experienced this, this traumatic event of watching their friends bleeding, dying on the floor, they haven't even processed it, and they haven't begun to process it, and they won't for a long time. And it's going to affect them their whole life. And if I can stop that by putting in metal detectors and bulletproof glass and single-point entries and campus monitors with guns, and people wanna just get butthurt on Twitter, then they can get butthurt on Twitter. I don't care, so.
Right, you know, I can't argue with the fortress, no, I, I can't argue with the, the, the fortress mentality there, you know? I mean, it's certainly one way to keep them safe. But like I said, uh, I just think that you can, you can apply, you, you know, you could throw a whole lot of money at armoring up a situation. But you can, like I said, you can apply the most intelligent interventions, and I think that's really.
Doesn't fix all the problems, right? That goes back to putting church back in our homes, and putting two-parent households back there, and rebuilding our families.
Making sure that these kids have fathers, making sure these kids have.
Again, these are not, these aren't problems that can be fixed with Band-Aid policies, they're problems that need to be fixed with effective policies. Less limited government involved in our education, that's my rant. I can do this all day. Stage and a broad man.
That's like, that's like telling, um, because the, the way, the way the military changed, um, how they do, um, the boot camp.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't put your hands on the hips, you can't yell, you can, and, and then the, the military trains, um, individual for combat.
Yeah.
Okay? So if you can't do none of this, and you can't get a person mindset ready for combat, but then in this hand, they're coming back in a body bag, right?
Yeah, how are we really doing them any favors by being nice to them?
Either you, you take care of it at this end, or you're gonna take care of it at this end. So parents need to pick which end that they want. If they want all this security in the schools, like the metal detectors and the single-point entry, to, to, to make sure that their kids come home safe after three-thirty, then that's what we need to do. But they can't have both, they can't have the cake and eat it too. You can't say, no, no metal detectors, no single-point entry, and then worry about your kid getting shot in, in, in a classroom, you know? So how would you go about getting parents involved in, in, in school safety? And getting parents involved in their children's education? Because there's a lot of parents drop off their kids to a teacher like it was a, a babysitter. And a lot of parents do it, because I hear them, tell me that.
No, that's how they do it in school.
They, they tell me that, you know, I gotta go to work.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna leave Jimmy home all day, I'm dropping her off at school. It's not like, you know, well, I need to take Jimmy to school so he get an education, so Jimmy won't have to bust their ass like I'm busting my ass, right? So Jimmy could be an entrepreneur, or a doctor, or whatever, you know? How would, how would you, how would you get parents involved in the school system? And take away that mindset that, that, that teachers are babysitters? How would you do that?
Boy, I tell you, that's, this is the million dollar question right here is how do we get parents more involved in schools? And I, you know, is there one clear, simple answer? No. But we need to work with better engagement. We need to, you know, but build up the PTOs. Try to get, uh, more engagement at the school level directly with the kids' education. We need to be doing more to bring the parents into the schools more times a year to interact with the teachers. We need to take these kids that are regular behavior problems and especially the ones that are being violent. And after you've had a couple of instances, then we need to get the CCSD police, we need to get CPS, we need to get Metro Police Department investigating what's going on in this home. Because violence doesn't come out of a vacuum, you know? I mean, if these, if these kids are showing up and they're being violent at school, it's probably because they're having violence done to them at home. And, you know, maybe we can save this kid, you know? And, you know, uh, you know, so really we need to do more to bring the parents into the schools more time each year is to interact with the teachers, to, to have a, a deeper connection with what's going on inside the schools. And we need to take those kids that are especially, you know, seem like lost cases. And we need to find out what's going on in their homes and, you know, save these kids if they can be saved.
And then while you're policing the, the, the parents and the student, how do you police the teachers with, with all these?
I have a question.
Teachers with the dating students and.
No, I have a question about this actually, because I say this all the time. I want to hear your opinion on it. I fully 100% advocate for cameras in classrooms.
Yes.
Right? Uh, my daughter went to two years of preschool and there was a classroom or there was a camera in her classroom every single day of the week. Now, it's not like I had direct access to this camera. Um, but at any time I could call the director and say, hey, I want to check in on my daughter. Can you give me access? And I could look at my daughter real quick and be like, she's good or whatever. Or if there weren't, there was an incident, uh, maybe she had a bully or whatever, they could pull back that footage and see. Or if there was a teacher that was actually doing some harm to children, they could actually see those things.
No, and I completely agree. Uh, you know, I mean, we've got making police officers wear cameras. We've got cameras everywhere. It's the most surveilled city in the whole world, but we don't have anything.
Some animal boarding has cameras in the dog and cats.
I can take my dog and board it and I can, from, from Mexico, I can log in and, and see what little Ripley's doing.
So here's the argument, right?
See what my kids, what's happening with my kids.
So here's the argument. Let me play devil's advocate again. Let me just clearly say I support cameras in classrooms because, uh, but here's the arguments you'll get, right? That it's a verbal violation, a privacy violation, things like that, right? Um, where, you know, these teachers don't feel like they need to be monitored or anything like that. Where there was just a story that was just released two days ago of a teacher having, having sex with an 18-year-old student, right? Um, and just in general, right? This was in an area that had, had a, had a camera in, this wouldn't have happened, right? Now, I'm not saying that the teacher wasn't a predator, wouldn't have eventually gone after the student or whatever. Um, but most crimes are crimes of opportunity.
Yeah.
Right? The, the attack on the teacher at El Dorado, had there been a camera in there? Do you think that teacher would have been attacked as easily as?
Likely if somebody was monitoring, seeing what was going on.
Um, now, can we, can we pay for people to constantly monitor these? Probably not, right? But if there's an incident, then at least it's on camera.
Well, uh, you know, again, like I said, uh, being an IT guy, I understand the logistics of actually setting up that many cameras, that many video feeds, storing the video and all that. And it really is, I mean, you'd be talking about a large, very expensive project. But completely, completely, I'm not.
RTC has all of the, all of their buses are laced with cameras.
Oh, yeah. So I mean, like I said, it, it, it's definitely something that we should make a priority and that we should do. Uh, and I think that, that in addition, uh, as a parent, you should be able to log into like infinite campus and have a link that says, what's my kid doing? And the system looks up the schedule of your student and turns on the right camera. You know, th- this is technically absolutely possible.
It's possible. That one's really, really in-depth. Something probably the budget in CCSD would not handle.
But yeah, I was about to say.
Here's why I say, here's why I say this.
Love to see that.
Cause you made an excellent point, right? All of our police officers wear cameras. We have cameras all throughout the hallways in most schools. Um, right now, the school district, and I'll just tell you this, right? Cause this is all public record, right? The school district is updating all of the camera systems in the schools that have the most calls, right? For violence, um, fights, things like that. So they're doing that, right? But I want.
Cameras, high def cameras.
High def cameras, more updated cameras, things like that. I want cameras in the classrooms, right? Cause even then, the school district just paid out, I think it was two or three million to update all of the cameras on the buses. Right? And so, so then tell, then tell me how you would counteract these parents that are just like, or these parents or these teachers that are like, no, teachers have a right to their privacy. I'm like, I'm sorry, but your privacy ends when you're teaching my student.
Again, you're, they are a government employee in a public building, carrying out a public function. What, and what part of that is private?
You don't get, you don't.
There's no privacy.
I don't care. You get no privacy.
Courtrooms.
You get no privacy when you're teaching my student.
And I completely agree. This is not, I mean, and again, think about how easy to make it to do teacher evaluations. Cause you could just kick on the camera at any time and see what's going on in the classroom. Again, I, I mean, these, the teachers don't want this because they don't want to be held accountable.
I would say, I would say the mo- the majority of teachers are okay with it.
Yeah.
They probably go one way or the other.
Proud of the work that they do. I don't have any problem being seen doing it.
It's the loudest ones that are not okay with it.
Well, it's, it's, it's the ones you were just talking about, the weirdos that want to come in and groom our kids in the classroom. These are the ones that don't want cameras.
I'm talking about the ones that come to my board meeting.
Yeah, they will, you know, look, I mean.
They yell at me for Twitter.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, tho- that's the ones.
Those are the ones.
But yeah, really, I think that, you know, I mean, these are the people that don't want cameras in the classroom because they want to be able to carry out their, you know, creepy groomer and commie agenda without anybody watching. And I don't want that happening. And I know, I can't imagine you want that happening to your kids.
No, I don't. I absolutely don't.
My children is my job.
I'm actually a terrible teacher, but if I, if it ever came down on the fact that I had to homeschool my teacher or homeschool my student, my child. I swear, I homeschool the teachers too.
We all homeschool in 2020. And to say, you know.
Well, and she was, I mean, she was in, she was in pre-K. So that was a little easier homeschoolers, like flashcards and colored shirts.
Ms. Williams, do you have anything more for Mr. Frels?
Um, I guess if you, if you could convince the, the voters as to why having a father figure on the board, um, what would you kind of tell them? Like, why is it so important to have a male on this board? And I know that's like gender specific. I mean, that's an unfair question, honestly, but, but.
But no, and I'll give it, I'll give it my honest answer because, uh, because I think the board needs decisiveness. And I think that's something that men are just better at. And it's not because I think women are indecisive overall, but I think that men are more decisive.
And I'll be fine.
This is literally the end of my first marriage. Uh, it was that argument right there. So yeah, you know, like again, yeah, but I'm, uh, yeah, I can be very decisive and I can take a situation apart very quickly and, you know, find the root issues and get right to the, you know, the heart of an issue. And it's something that I think that I'm good at and it's something that I think is kind of a dad's skill.
I have one more question for you. Um, thank you for that. You've seen the other school board members on, like on the board and how they interact with each other and how they interact in general. Um, do you think you can work truly with, say, say you, say you get on the board? Do you think you can work with the rest of the board members?
Yeah. Uh, for a good portion of my career, I was.
I know. She's the worst.
I, I think we could get along okay. But no, I mean, really, I think that, um, honestly, the, the, the person I've got the biggest issue with on the board is Dr. Cavazos. And I, if, if I was to be elected, I would replace her. Well, you know, like anybody who gets that, you know, I, I respect anybody who gets that level of education.
I respect some people that get that education. Just because you have a doctor in front of your title doesn't necessarily make you smart.
That's it. You, you're not wrong.
A lot of smart people don't have common sense.
That's true.
But, uh, but yeah, but I think that it's something in the, over the course of my career that I've had to do a lot is I don't get to pick the people I work with. I get the, you know, the, the people I'm working with are given to me and I have to make that work. And sometimes that means taking a, a really technical group and a end user group and negotiating between the groups and figuring out what everybody actually wants in the end, so that we get the final product that we're looking for. And, uh, I think that ability to bring together groups and to, you know, find common ground with anyone is something that I, I would love to bring to the board. Between that and my, you know, ability to manage projects and break big hairy problems down into little pieces. Uh, I think those are, that's really what I would have to offer the board.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Frels, do you have anything? Did we cover everything?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the only thing I would go over is I'm a, a big supporter of the Parents Bill of Rights. Uh, this has been passed in a number of states around the country. And it's something that I would love to, if I was to be elected to the school board here in Clark County, I would definitely lobby the assembly to try and get Parents Bill of Rights passed here.
Give us some highlights on the Bill of Rights.
Uh, basically saying that, uh, the parents have the right to direct the upbringing, education, healthcare, mental health of their children without demonstrating that or, and that the government shouldn't have any right to infringe on that without really demonstrating that, you know, the child is being beaten or harmed in some way. And I just, otherwise, like I said, the children don't belong to the government, you know? We are, we're citizens here. We're not subjects. And the children do not belong to the government. They belong to their parents up until they're 18. That's the way our system works. And when they're 18, they become.
They still linger.
Well, you know.
Can't get rid of yours, can you?
I was about to say, I got a, I, I, I got some in my house too, so I understand. But, uh, but no, but I think that the idea that people should be pushing their kids out when they're 18. I mean, I understand where that came from, but we do better as families when we stick together and we shouldn't be in such a. Well, there you see, I.
Yeah, same.
I also moved out at 17. Yeah.
See, we're doing just fine. Don't forget that.
Yeah. So, uh, but yeah, but.
And have a look back since.
Yeah, exactly. No, it, you know, exactly. But, uh, but I was ready for that. Or well, I wasn't, but I figured it out, you know? And I mean, but keep your family close and, you know, I mean, don't be afraid to love them and, you know, take care of them through college and then send them out into the world, you know? I think that, uh, we've lost big families, you know? I mean, it used to be that when a young family had a kid, they had, they, they lived near their parents and grandparents or with their parents and grandparents. So there was built-in babysitters and you didn't send your kids out to strangers to get them taken care of during the day. And having to, having to do that as a single working father at times, send my kid out for strangers to take care of them. I mean, it breaks my heart every time and I never want to do it. Uh, you know, so we shouldn't be in such a hurry to break up big families, you know? I think that, uh, it's something that we lost. And again, like we said, we need to, we need, we need more Jesus and we need to keep our families close.
So I have a question because you said, you said, if I'm elected to the school board, I'll push the, for the assembly to, to sponsor this bill and get it passed through the legislative session. Um, if you don't win, will you still continue to do that work?
Absolutely.
Cause what I see a lot is people will run for office and they'll lose the seat, right? For whatever reason, right? Doesn't mean they're a bad candidate or anything like that. But they'll lose the seat and then they go away for three to four years. And then they only circle back when the next election comes and you haven't seen them do their work. They, they only have the name recognition because of the last election cycle. Um, so I think this is actually a really important bill and I think this is something that, um, should absolutely be passed regardless if you win or not. So I, I guess my one ask to you is that regardless if you win the seat or not, I would, I would like to see this start going through the legislative session in the next, next year.
I've got a seven-year-old. He's going into second grade next year. So I mean, I've got a long run ahead of me with CCSD. And so I, uh.
I'm not going anywhere.
I'm not going anywhere, you know?
Well, Mr. Frels, we'll go. Let's talk to legislative session together.
Yeah, I really would love the opportunity to do that. And I think that, uh, like I said, we, uh, recognizing in the letter of law that our children are ours and not the government's is, I, I think would make everybody feel a little better, especially considering the current political circumstances.
I would agree.
Well, Mr. Frels, I'd like to thank you for coming on the program.
Thank you. I really, thank you guys for making me feel so welcome and giving me the opportunity to come and speak here again.
Ms. Williams, I'd like to thank you for coming on the program as well.
Thank you, Steve.
And Mr. Frels, could you look into the camera?